Get to work Wednesday morning, last week. Hi, how you doing? Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Free Tuesday, February 25, 2020. The Springfield City Council Committee of the Whole is called to order. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call of members.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the Tuesday, February 11 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes?
Second.
The first and second. Any discussion? There be all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it. We have an Office of Budget and Management contract report for the month of January. There's 14 items on the report. Any discussion of the 14 items on the report? There be none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it. There's no, there are no presentations scheduled for this portion of the meeting, although we will have a discussion of the Pillsbury Initiative under citizen request to address the council. Next item on the agenda is ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. They are 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-276, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-057, 2020-067. Before we go any further, was Representative Shear here? I just want to recognize, we've got our representative here. Thank you for being here. Will the representative be discussing something, anything in particular, Mayor, that you've... Anything you wish to bring to our attention or discuss activity of the General Assembly or your district?
Sure, and it seems weird to turn my back on everyone like that, but I really didn't intend to speak. I just wanted to come and let our community know that I support the good things that you guys are trying to do and the hardships that people go through at home. So if you ever need me, I'm here to help. The Capitol bill is moving along, and so hopefully there'll be a lot of changes happening with that in the next couple of months as the growing season comes along and the building season. So look forward to some really good things and really good changes coming for Springfield. That's really all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving now to the ordinances for committee consideration, Mr. Clerk.
CWLP, 2020-071, an ordinance approving a proposal in the amount of $42,625 with stress engineering services incorporated for a high-energy piping inspection for the Dahlman Power Plant Unit Number 33 for the electric division for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-072, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with OPTMCTRL LLC in an amount not to exceed $139,550 to re-engineer the unit coordinated control system for Unit 4 Boiler-Turbine Controls for the Office of Public Utilities. Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-073, an ordinance authorizing a three-year agreement with Cardinal Elevator LLC for routine stack elevator maintenance in an amount not to exceed $162,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-074, an ordinance authorizing change order number 1 and additional funding in an amount not to exceed $5,156,436.51 with GE Steam Power Incorporated for the repair and maintenance of Unit 33 for a total amount payable of $6,080,447.51 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Director Brown, could you give us an update on the status of the Unit 3 repairs and the insurance coverage?
So right now, once this ordinance gets passed, then GE will be able to then perform the rest of their work for the Unit 33. And the insurance coverage, we do have 100% coverage of that, so basically it's a million-dollar deductible that we'd pay off the top. So out of the $6 million, we'll have basically $5 million, a little over $5 million in insurance coverage for that.
Thank you. Any... Alderman Hanauer.
Didn't we already, didn't we include in a previous ordinance about $900,000 for, to get where we had to take everything apart, and you said that that was going to be also included in the insurance? So does that include this, that amount, in here? So that's a...
This is a change order to that, so, yeah. It's just, so the $6 million is a total amount.
Okay, so it's not $6 million plus the $900...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-075, an ordinance authorizing a supplement appropriation in an amount of $6,080,447.51 from unappropriated fund balance for the repair of Unit 33 Turbine for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-076, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses of $11,000 to business occupying parcel SR0304, Henry Nelson's son's company, located at 800 South Ninth Street for Segment 5 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-077, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses of $6,946.35 to William D. Moore for the business located at 2264 and 2266 South Sixth Street for Segment 5 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-089, an ordinance authorizing condemnation of real property for the purpose of constructing Usable Segment 5 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent agenda. We don't see condemnation ordinances in any frequency. This one here, depending on how you count the parcels, there's possibly more than 10 parcels, thereabouts. Could we have additional information? These all belong to the same owner, or do they spread out, or how...
It is my understanding that there are five owners, and these five, these particular parcels are necessary for the, being able to go forward with the Usable Segment 5 bid, I believe, in July. And so what, you may recall that there's a state and federal process that happens through the property acquisition process. That includes appraisals, that includes discussions of relocation expenses as allowed under the regulations. And where there cannot be agreement, then they typically, they will issue what's called a 60-day letter, and again, that's required by state law. And then this is the follow-on ordinance, however, if an agreement is reached, then none of this ever actually would be filed. So these are the remaining pieces for Usable Segment 5, and it is my understanding it is five individual owners, but it consists of more than one parcel, and one owner may own more than one.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Someone from Hanson Engineers is here, so if they'd like to come forward and give us an update, that'd be great.
Can I ask a question before...
Alderman Turner.
So my question is, has the city moved all ordinances and approval documents for the Usable Segments currently underway? Is everything...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
With respect to, except these final ones that we're dealing with tonight, then as the properties are acquired, then there would be some follow-on ordinances approving the acquisition.
Right, but there's not, but everything that, everything that the city needs to do in order to keep the project moving has already been done.
That is my, that is my understanding, all the various agreements and so on, yes.
Okay, because I was told that there was some holdup somewhere, so, okay, thank you.
May I, Chair?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think if there's anything, it might be with, Steve can answer this, with regards to properties being purchased. I think there's, you know, what it's praised for and what the property owner wants to receive, and that's where we're getting into this gray area. So with regards to the segment and everything coming forward, I think that's why we're trying to do this process or this particular ordinance to make sure that it keeps moving along. And then, but I would ask that we put it on debate if you'd like, because Nate Bottoms not here, but he'll be here next week to add to the discussion.
Okay, then I have one other question. I'm sorry, I can wait till after you finish.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
No, you're on your crutches, go ahead.
Okay.
Sir, before you go further, your complete name, please, and the address of your place of business, at Hanson Engineers?
Yes, my name is Steve Warren. I work at Hanson Engineers, 1525 South Sixth.
That was Steve Warren?
Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N.
Thank you.
And actually, I'm here to answer any questions, and also to, he is correct, that we have, there's five parcels that we don't have agreements to right now, and that, you know, using condemnation may be our only alternative to keep the project on track. We probably need to, you know, pass this ordinance to keep things moving.
And what are the locations of those?
They are Usable Segment 5, which is from South Grand to, I think, is it past Cook Street? There are five locations on there. Actually, I left my folder over there, but I have, I can tell you the properties.
Yeah, please, if we could get the addresses, that would be helpful.
One of them is Quickwall, and actually, we almost have an agreement with them. Of course, we have to get approval through the, through the city, but that one, I think we're going to come to an agreement. One is Seidner, and he's on Barrett Street, 709 Barrett. The NS Railroad, which we may not, we have an agreement right now to use their property. We have a construction and maintenance agreement so that we can move forward with the project without that, but we may need to condemn them, and actually, I think that has to go through ICC first. Masonry Consortium, that's on South Grand, just on the, I guess, the northwest corner of 11th and South Grand. And American Tower, which they have a, they have a tower, I guess, on Masonry Consortium's property, but we, they have a permanent easement, and we're trying to purchase that.
Any further discussion, any questions? Alderwoman Turner.
Okay, the property that I have the question about is then located in the 1900 block of South Grand. And I know that there has been some discussion, some discussion about it, and the reason why I'm concerned is because it's, the property belongs to someone who is disabled, and she did a significant amount of upgrades to her property because of her disability. And there seems to be some concern that, that her disability and the needs, and her needs are not being taken into consideration.
Okay.
Are you familiar with that property?
Yes, I'm familiar with the parcel, I know the name of the person, but that's a hardship acquisition, and there's a process for that, and we're following that process, and right now, we've done the appraisal for her property. We're having a lot of trouble right now finding a place comparable for her property.
Right, because of the disability?
No, not necessarily because of that. We can buy a house and improve it to, you know, to alleviate her disability, but we have to find one that's in her, you know, that's in the right price range. The market is really slow right now. We're looking, we look weekly to try to find her something, so we're still continuing to work with her.
Okay.
And we won't stop until we find something.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, because it sounded like, it sounded like that that was not how it was proceeding, that she was being put in a undesirable situation, so...
Well, I hope not. I mean...
I hope not, too.
We're continuing to work with her, and we're continuing to try to find a suitable place for.
Okay.
It has to be, by regulation, it has to be decent, safe, and sanitary, so...
Right.
We have to find a good, a good place for, we're not just going to throw her in somewhere.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Warren, for being here tonight. There was a motion to place it on consent. Whoever made the motion, can you modify it to place on debate?
That would be Alderman Hanauer.
I'll make a motion, we put it on debate.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer.
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-090, an ordinance authorizing condemnation of real property for the purpose of constructing the Hilltop Road Multi-Use Trail for the Office of Public Works. Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion?
Yes. Corporation Council, could you tell me, we were in the negotiation stages for a while, and we went to condemnation, and is there something called a quick take? Is that, can you explain that, please?
The state law provides for what is called a quick take authority in certain limited circumstances. Normally, that is not something that's available to the city unless there's special, special legislation for a specific project. And normally, it is limited to use by state agencies, a DOT, for example, where there's a critical road or something of that nature.
Okay, so we probably won't be able to use that?
We do not have that eligibility at this point in time for these parcels.
Okay, so the condemnation part of it, we are about to start legal proceedings on that, correct?
At the end of the 60-day, we have to follow, you know, all the proper rules via the acquisition process, and so there are letters that are sent out that allow for a 60-day notice period asking the parties to try to reach an agreement. After that time, then there could potentially be legal action, meaning condemnation suit would be filed in Circuit Court.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There be none, all those in favor...
Steve would like to say something.
Mr. Warren.
The 60-day letter is required by the state, the city's not under that requirement, they don't need to send a 60-day letter, they just have to decide whether or not they can do it.
So what, how will we proceed?
We've done that, I believe, already, the 60-day, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Finance, 2020-078, an ordinance authorizing execution of two-year contract extension with number CS17-01-87 with Cone Incorporated for maintenance of elevators at the municipal complex for an amount not to exceed $107,298 for the Office of Budget and Management. Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2020-079, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for 2020 planning services and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed $185,000 from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. Move for consent.
There's a motion for consent, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes, I appreciate the work that is done by the Regional Planning and Zoning Commission, but at some point, I think we need to take a serious look at having our own city planner. I've said this from the beginning, I get calls about it all the time, I get comments about it all the time, so I respect the comprehensive plan, but I also think at some point, we have to be looking out for ourselves, and I don't think we do that enough at the city. So just my two cents.
Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, what I asked Regional Planning for, as you know, they're funded by the city as well as the county, and there's that perception, you know, that they're not doing their fair share with regards to the city, so two things. One, I asked Molly Burns to designate someone for the city, you know, so it would be our own specific person. And so that's something that we're discussing. The other one is, my personal opinion, this came back out when the EDC was being formed, with economic development, planning goes hand in hand with that. So I believe, my own personal opinion, that regional planning should be relocated outside the county and maybe be housed where the SSGA is, or, you know, that way, they're cohesive with regards to that. So, you know, I think that is willing to, or should be looked at and discussed with regards to that, because there are a lot of financial resources with regards to our own individual planner, you know, you can't put your, all your eggs in one person, you know, because it's just their perception. So that's the value of having Regional Planning, because it's a group of individuals, and Val could speak to how many are there, but I agree, there should be more attention given to the city and that perception of, that it's under the county roof, it's, you know, run by the county. I think you can resolve that by pulling them out, putting them with the SSGA, and it makes more sense from, in my opinion, with regards to planning and economic development, from a regional perspective.
I appreciate that, and it's Molly Burns.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We clarified this last time.
Well, you'll probably have to do it again, I'm sorry. [laughing].
Alderwoman Conley, and then Alderman Redpath.
Oh, she's here.
Molly Burns, I'm Executive Director of the Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission, and I'm available to answer any questions and to address any issues. The mayor and I did have a conversation about designating someone specific planner to only do city work. The discussions will continue. One of the things I did bring up with the mayor is that if I were an alderman, I'd hesitate to do that, because you're pigeonholed into the experiences, the abilities, and the training of that one person. Whereas this way, I can assign, of the 12 of us, I can assign specific planners with specific skills to whatever task the city might want to finish. For example, when we did the retail app for the Office of Planning and Economic Development, I had parts of three different people working for that. They each brought different skills to the table. They each brought different levels of expertise and technology and those kinds of things. But I've got one person, you're stuck with one person. And so that's problematic, then, and things that would need to work through. And it's always a discussion about where we're housed and all that kind of stuff, but I just want to point out, the $185,000, if in fact, the Regional Planning Commission, through whomever decides that it needs different office space in a different location, I can unequivocally guarantee that $185,000 will go up significantly, because we pay a cost allocation to the county, and that, those dollars are going to have to be made up somewhere. We are part of the county's technology system in terms of the GIS system and all of those things, those licensing agreements, and so it would be quite a sizable financial commitment. Not saying I'm not willing to talk about it and have these discussions go on, but that is one of the things. And as I said to the mayor, you know, by designated, he said, "Well, who would you designate?" And I said, "Me. I'm your city planner," because then I can go back and kind of ferret out to the appropriate people, so... And I don't mean to be glib in any way, but this way, we can assign the appropriate people to the task, and I think Val can attest to the fact that I had at least three or four people working on that retail app, and it took, you know, about a two-and-a-half, three-month period of time that may have taken the one person with the wrong skill set a year, right? So, anyway.
Please remain there, Molly. Alderwoman Conley, and then Alderman Redpath.
Thank you. Molly, I want you to know, I'm going to preface this with saying, this is nothing against the work that your, that your office does, because I think you guys do a fabulous job. But I'd like to echo the issues that Alderwoman DeSensio brought up. This has come up frequently in conversations I've had with constituents. It's not uncommon for a city of our size to have its own planning office within the city. I think we've seen ample evidence of issues in our city in terms of projects that get started and not completed, that I think there, I think the evidence is mounting that this is probably something that we do need to consider, having someone who is focused with an office within our city, so just want to, not for this year, and I'm a guess on you, and this is great, but I would just like to echo that Alderwoman DeSensio brings up a very valid point.
Understood.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, consolidation is always good, unless you're the, feel like you're on the short end of the stick. You know, the bottom line is, is that as long as we set out specific criterias on exactly what we want from the, from the planners, and we get that information, I think it's, it's really probably a good idea for us to stay with this, but I'm not opposed to looking out for something to see how other cities do it, maybe somebody our size, but this has nothing to do with you. This has to do with, we hear from our constituents on a daily basis on all kinds of issues, this, dog catching, and the whole health department, everything, so it's just that. But as long as we set out criteria that we want to have looked at, I think, as long as that's being followed, I think this is not a bad proposal for us.
Understood. Thank you very much, Alderman, for that clarification.
Alderman Hanauer, and then Alderman Turner.
My only concern with, and I'm not opposed to a city planner, I'll say that, but my concern is, is, you know, they've got 12 staff plus Molly, right?
I, that's included me.
That's including you.
Mm-hmm, and actually, I just had someone that I'm losing because of salary, they're going somewhere else, so, anyway.
You know, I mean, where's the money going to come from? You're looking at, you're probably looking at another, you know, let's just say we go half with that staff, you know? But this, but it's going to be a lot, we're getting a pretty good deal for, what are we paying here, $185? A staff of six is going to cost us more than $185. That's, I'm, I mean, by the time you get, you know, the assistance and all that, I just, I'm, you know, I'm willing to look at it, but that's, that's an issue that I'm concerned with, is, you know, again, where are we going to get the money from? We're taking out a fund balance, keep taking things out of fund balance, and pretty soon, we're going to be in the same hole we were a while back, so...
Alderwoman Turner.
Chuck raises a good point. Consolidation is good until you feel like you're getting on the short end of the stick, and I was involved with several city-county consolidations, and I, I'm not going to say that the city or the county was on the short end of the stick, however, I do believe that often citizens are on the short end of the stick when we look at consolidations, and I could, now's not the time to go back and rediscuss all of that, but I believe it's true that often citizens are on the short end of the stick, and I think that we have to prioritize, and we have to decide how we want to proceed as a city. I think that if we have a city planner that is dedicated to working with city leaders on the priorities that we set as a city, that's different than what we, what we get with the Regional Planning Commission, and I just think that we, at some point, we have to decide what kind of city we want to be and how we want to proceed. And sometimes, that's stepping out in uncharted waters, and you may not have all the answers when you step out, but it's all about growing and determining where you want your city to, how you want your city to grow. And, you know, I, I think that right now, the way that, the way that we are growing... And, you know, I, I think that right now, the way that, the way that we are growing is not beneficial to the entire city.
Alderwoman DiSensio?
I have done my research on this, and other cities of our size have anywhere from two to six city planners, so I'm just going to leave it at that.
Having served on the Regional Planning Commission for five, or, yeah, five years now, and I'm sorry I missed last Wednesday's meeting, because we were here till 12 o'clock the night before, and I think that's the first in four years I've missed. But I've always been impressed by the range and depth of experience at the Regional Planning Commission. When you've got a staff of nine, 10, 11, 12, they've been there a number of years, you can draw upon them, and they have, you know, that maturity of experience. This is really valuable when you look at planning issues. This contract that we're approving today, or, excuse me, reviewing today, but will pass a week from now, it allows for a different, for additional matters to come, to be brought to the Regional Planning Commission by the city. I mean, there's, I think there's, it says, you know, if, if there's other planning considerations that the city needs advice on, we can bring them to you. So, you know, members of the council, let's take advantage of that if we need to, and Mr. Mayor, maybe we should, when we've got a significant planning decision to make, maybe we should draw upon that experience that exists there. Typically, at any Regional Planning Commission meeting, besides myself and Alderman Proctor, there's typically Val Yezel is there, and Bonnie Drew is usually there also at the meeting, and so we do have strong city representation at the, at the planning meetings. And you've been responsive to requests, for example, that new interactive map that is being available for planning purposes. I doubt the city could have ever put that together without the assistance of the Regional Planning Commission. So, there's a lot to think about, and thank you for being here tonight. Are there any other matters to discuss or issues, concerns? There be none. We've got this on a motion for what?
Consent.
For consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. Thank you.
2020-091, An Ordinance Authorizing Additional $118,248 for Purchase of Rock Salt from Compass Minerals America Incorporated Under State Contract PSD 20-416-CMS-Boss4-P-12695 and Not to Exceed $709,498 and a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $350,000 from unappropriated fund balance for the Office of Public Works.
Move to Consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2020-092, An Ordinance Authorizing Execution of a Professional Services Contract with Lauterback &amp; Emmon LLP to Complete the Actuarial Reports for Fiscal Years 2020, 2021, 2022 and City Police and Firefighters' Pension Funds for a Total Amount Not to Exceed $56,670 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move to Consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Director McCarty, thanks for including in the contract the five-year and, five-year projections and the 20 to 30-year projections. That's useful information. Thanks for including that in the contract. And I, this also provides for the actuarial study of the post-employment benefits for health insurance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2020-080, An Ordinance to Decrease the Number of Class C Liquor Licenses by One and to Increase the Number of Class B Liquor Licenses by One for FKG Oil Company Doing Business as Lincoln Motor Mart Located at 610 South Grand Avenue.
Move to Consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Discussion? In reviewing this, I noticed that this is to decrease one liquor license, which is a class?
C. And to increase it to a Class B.
So, they've got approval now to sell packaged beer and wine till 1:00 a.m., and what we're saying is, if we, next week pass this, we're including spirits within the opportunity to sell. Since I've got a problem, I, I think it's, we're taking a risk here for selling spirits late at night, and so I'm going to hold back consent, my consent vote, because to get it on the consent requires unanimous consent, so.
It doesn't, first of all, and second, it's in my ward. It's in Ward 6. It was discussed with me, and you can't hold up consent by one vote. You say this all the time, but it's not true. So, I'm moving it to consent, and I hope I get a second on it, because I second. All right. Okay. Thank you.
You've got a second, but.
You can vote no next week.
Consent agenda, to place, placed on consent, we've been through this many times, requires unanimous consent. That's just the way the state law is written. So, if anyone declines to offer the consent, it doesn't get on consent. So that's, if we want to, you can amend your.
Excuse me, Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Zirkel is, could you give some clarification around this issue, please?
I, I do believe, I, I think I've circulated a memorandum, maybe at least once, on this issue.
It might have been before the last 12 months, last 10 months.
No, I'm just trying to give a little bit of history as well.
Okay, thank you.
And so the state law that allows for an omnibus vote, or by consent, grouping things together and voting one vote to, for multiple ordinances, requires that it be unanimous when that action is taken. So, the city council has modified that ever so slightly, because we have a first reading, second reading, so the committee is where now the process of setting consent occurs. And so consequently, it does require unanimous agreement at the committee to place it on consent for final action at the city council. But keep in mind that the only thing that your, your, the whole consent versus debate, a consent agenda can be debated. There can be questions, there can be discussion during the consent. So, the only difference is, do you vote on it singularly, as a single ordinance, or do you vote on it as part of a group? The same effect reaches the, the same. However, the state law is very clear on the point that in order to be on omnibus vote or on consent, that it must be unanimous on the part of all members of the body. And I can recirculate that memorandum.
When this has come up in the past, the issue was whether, once something's placed on consent, and it then comes up for passage a week later, can any one person take it off consent at that point? And that's where the discussion has been in the past, but.
And, and the answer to that question is no, they cannot. It would require a majority vote.
Right.
Because of the unique way that the council does a committee, and then, then the city council as a whole. Yes, sir. I mean, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Donald?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Corporation Council, I think, you know, this issue comes up time to time. I think in order to, it would be helpful to have that memorandum circulated again, but also the actual statute, because, because my understanding is there was a difference between unanimous consent and consent. Unanimous consent is an example, those like Alderwoman Turner, who spent many, many years at the legislature, knows that they do unanimous consent all the time. They even call it unanimous consent, and it's different than what is considered the, we'll say, our agreed-to ordinance list. It's, it's all semantics, but I'd just like to, if you could cite, provide that citation as well, and then, and then that'll either clear it up one way or another, so.
No, no problem. Be happy to do, be happy to do that.
So, where we're at is that the, the, the motion for consent fails because there's not unanimity for the motion, but anyone can make a motion for debate?
I still have discussion, if that's okay. So, is this something that's followed by our rules, Corporation Council, or is this a state statute that we're, that we are strictly adhered to?
It is a state statute that, the language was incorporated into the consent decree.
So, how do we change it?
Like I said, I'll be happy, I think I attached it when we circulated it before, but I will be happy to do that again.
So how do we change it?
You cannot change the state statute or the consent decree vis-à-vis the, the, you know, consent agenda versus.
We can't go back to court?
Of course.
Well, then you would be wanting to deviate from the state law provision.
Before, I recognize Alderman Hennar. I just want to say that we're kind of getting sidetracked on a procedural issue. The substantive part of this is, you know, when people go out and buy spirits late at night, 1:00.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
The discussion right now is about, is about the procedure. So you can't say, we're not going to discuss the, Alderman Hennar has a question about the procedure.
Okay, fine. I don't have a problem.
Thank you.
Well, here's, and, and I can appreciate, Mr. Zirkel, that you said that it's part of the consent decree. Now, I was a young, young man when this whole thing came up, and Chuck, you were on the original council. At the time, they did not have a consent, they did not have a.
Unanimous.
Unanimous consent or a consent agenda, right? We changed that under Karen Serra's mission. Okay, but how can they, my point is, is how can they change it? How can they change it under, under an administration if it was, and I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong, Jim, I just say, I, I just, I, I want to know how they can change it during an administration when, when it wasn't there at the beginning. Obviously, they change the rules that, that we follow, and I guess the, the question I have is, is this, if, if, if we don't call it unanimous consent, we call it consent, does that mean that, that one person can't take it off?
Point of order, you know, an alderman asks for a ruling, we've received the ruling, I think we've got to move on.
Move to debate?
Questions.
Move to debate? Second.
I would, if you would like, I could answer Alderman Hennar's question, if, if you would like. The original federal consent decree set up Mayor Alderman to form a government, and at that time, the council set up a series of actually committees, and so there was not a lot of use of omnibus votes where ordinances were grouped together. Later on, I think Mayor Hesera or the subsequent council felt that the procedure would go much quicker if you could start grouping the ordinances together. And so it just so happens that both state law and the consent decree allow ordinances to be grouped together by consent, and so consequently, that was the process that I think Mayor Hesera and that city council, you know, agreed upon. And that's been, in one form or another, what's continued to today.
So, just getting to the, I didn't mean this to be adversarial or confrontational. We're allowed to have different points of view on the council. So my point of view is, when we allow spirits to be sold late at night, typically, oftentimes, what's going on there, there's a late-night party, and we're making an opportunity for people to go out and buy spirits at the last minute, and it can lead to trouble.
We do not legislate morality.
You don't have the floor right now.
Well, I can talk if I want to talk.
Well, that's going to create problems around here.
Okay.
What did you say?
Nothing.
Okay. So, just trying to express a point of view, and we don't all, all have to have the same point of view, you know, it's a free country, it's a democracy. I think we got to be careful about selling spirits late at night, because, you know, we had a situation, how it was at a bar, but, you know, a beer bottle being thrown at a police officer. Let's not forget these situations. So this is just out of a sense of caution, out of a, a sense of, let's avoid late-night situations getting out of hand. So, you know, we can just vote it next week. That's, that's my point of view on it. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor placing on the debate agenda, say aye.
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 Any against? The ayes have it.
No.
Okay, just, we, we, do we have a court to, how many, let's have a roll call vote for placing on debate.
Yeah, I want it on debate.
Aye. I give.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
I'll withdraw my request for roll call vote.
2020.
Thank you, Mr. Court.
2020-081, An Ordinance Authorizing a Decrease in Number of Class D Liquor Licenses by One Due to Closure of Business by Capital Showmes Incorporated Doing Business as Showmes Located at 3101 South MacArthur Boulevard.
Move to Consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
2020-082, An Ordinance Approving the Reappointment of Pete Roberts to the Springfield Disabilities Commission.
For debate.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for debate. Let's see, how many, aye, reappointments do we have? Is there a motion for omnibus consideration of the three? There's a motion, second for omnibus consideration. Mr. Clerk?
2020-083, An Ordinance Approving the Reappointment of Jill Steiner to the Springfield Disabilities Commission. 2020-084, An Ordinance Approving the Reappointment of Elizabeth Langding to the Springfield Disabilities Commission.
So is there a motion to place all three on the, on the debate agenda? There's a first and a second. Any, any discussion?
Chair, do we have anyone here who would like to speak?
Do we have anyone here? Ms. Drew says no, so if they're here next week, we can recognize the appointees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2020-085, An Ordinance Authorizing a Sponsorship Payment of $7,500 to the Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum for the Negro League Traveling Exhibit pursuant to Article VII, Chapter 37, Section 37.62 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a consent, a second for consent. Any discussion? Alderman Redpath?
Where's the funding coming from, out of your budget?
Yeah, so to answer your question, it will come from the local tourism grants that we've set up, that line item that we've set up this year, and it's obviously been approved by the Tourism Advisory Council as well. We do have a couple of upsets from the African American History Museum. I want to thank them for coming today, and I just want to quickly say what an opportunity this is for the City of Springfield to host this Negro League traveling exhibit. Will be the only city in Illinois to host this in 2020, will be coming from Kansas City, what great opportunity, as well as we're adding the African American History Museum to our award-winning Apes Hat Hunt program this year. So we'll be adding that site as well, and we'll also have special programming in our history comes alive. So to tie all this together is a great opportunity for the City of Springfield.
Thank you. Can you please let us know when it's coming in, so we can. I definitely want to see it.
Good evening. Yes, the exhibit will be here from April 11th to June 23rd, and we are, we have been, we are the only group in Illinois to offer this traveling exhibit, and this is the 100th anniversary of the start of the Negro League baseball in America. And all of the MLB teams will be having patches and will be celebrating at their various venues. So, we feel very honored, and we will definitely appreciate the sponsorship of the tourism office in helping us to promote it. We have a prominent player, Josh Johnson, who lived in Springfield and played in the '30s and '40s and had a very stellar record. We actually have Negro League, rather Negro baseball teams that date back to 1860, the Dexter's, which I don't think very many people in this city know about. So there's a very rich heritage, and what's so special about this exhibit is it has a, it also features Hispanic players. When these players could not play in America, they played in the Caribbean and in Mexico. And many of our players today on modern teams are from those areas, and that goes back to this richer heritage of when these players all worked together. So, we're very honored if we are approved for funding for this, I think, outstanding opportunity for our city.
Thank you very much for bringing us.
Thank you for being here tonight. There be no further discussion? Alderwoman Turner?
I just want to say what a real pleasure it has been to see the museum grow. When it first started, it was, you know, just a small exhibit space in downtown, and I'm very excited the way that it has grown and the types of exhibits that you have been able to bring to Springfield. It, it's definitely added a significant cultural experience for everyone here, so thank you very much for all the work you do. And I know that most of the work is done by volunteers.
It is. It is.
Yeah, and, and that add, that's another significant piece of it, is that it's, it's such a benefit to the city and all the volunteers that come together to do it, so thank you very much.
And we definitely support, appreciate the support of the city and all the work that we've done, which makes a lot of what we do possible.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any other questions?
Thank you for being here tonight. There be no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2020, 086. An ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of $10,000 to One in a Million Incorporated for the Juneteenth event pursuant Article Roman numeral VII, Chapter 37, Section 37.62 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for consent?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those.
In One in a Million, ain't President Mike Williams here, he can, he could, I know, I told him, I wasn't going to bring you up, but he can speak on some of the, some of the plans that him and his group has for Juneteenth.
Really, Sean? It was ready to let this go.
All right.
How you doing? My name is Michael Williams, I'm President, One in a Million, and I actually spoke with Alderman Hennar about increasing this to $100,000. I just wanted to make everybody laugh. I just wanted to make everybody laugh.
Mike, I think I was the one who did all the amendments, you went to the wrong guy.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, no, seriously, we really appreciate Officer Scott working with us and Alderman working with us and getting some money for this great event that actually is the reason of the young man that's sitting in that picture behind the mayor, Abraham Lincoln, you know, he signed the Emancipation Proclamation freeing the slaves years later, still slavery, he sent federal troops, Union troops, I'm sorry, throughout the South freeing slaves, when they got to Galveston, Texas, they freed a bunch of slaves and they started a celebration called Juneteenth. It's worldwide, in some parts of the United States, it's a holiday. The state of Illinois celebrates it as a commemorative date, and so does the City of Springfield. Thank you for you guys for your vote, hopefully you'll support it, and we'll try to put on another really good Juneteenth, and I hope to see everybody around this circle there. You know, one of the things we talked about with Scott, you know, when we spend this money for advertisement, is to go outside of the area to get people to come in, to participate in the event, but I think we got people that's within the city that needs to come and be a part of the event, and I would be glad to see you guys' faces, it would be a good deal, but I'll answer any other questions if you have.
What's the date on it, Mike?
Father's Day weekend.
Can you shorten that parade route? Can that parade get a little smaller?
Uh, Sean, well, there's going, it's going to be some changes to it.
Okay.
It's going to be some changes to it, and I believe that's coming up at another time that we're discussing, and I think there's some other changes that might need to be made, you know, to the celebration, to enhance it, as Scott says, we do need to enhance it, no doubt. We got to find a way to get the participation up by the entire city, not just one side of town. And when the city is putting its money in it, I think the city should put forth that effort to get everybody to be a part of it, and we welcome any ideas that you guys may have, any changes that you guys might have to it, but it's our baby, you know what I'm saying, it's, I'm proud of it, I'm very proud of it.
I will happily get in the dunk tank again if all my fellow alderpeople will also take a shift.
I guess you will show up.
You can get in the dunk tank, but no, Joe, you can't throw no balls at it.
You're onto something there.
You can't throw no balls. The money's no good at the dunk tank.
That was good, Mike.
I'm sorry, any questions?
No, no.
No, we're good now.
You're definitely, definitely in the promotion business. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2020, 087. An ordinance authorizing a two-year extension of an agreement with PSI to furnish development and administer entry-level exams for the Police and Fire Departments from February 20th, 2020, to February 20th, 2022, for an amount not to exceed $125,000 for the Office of Human Resources.
Move for consent?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, Alderwoman Dissenso.
There, look, is there a typo here? Because it says 125 up here, but then in our description, it says 145.
Yeah.
So is it 125 or 145? Eagle eye tonight.
I'll see.
I know.
The amount should be 145 on both lines.
145?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk, so noted?
Noted.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any against, the ayes have it?
2020, 088. An ordinance authorizing execution of a two-year agreement with Floriscent Psychological Services for pre-employment psychological evaluations for police and fire candidates, and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed $30,000 through March 3rd, 2022, for the Office of Human Resources.
Move for consent?
Second.
Motion, second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, any against, the ayes have it? We have now completed the ordinances for committee consideration, is there any unfinished business before the council? Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, could you tell me, are we close to finishing up the leases on the new, on the old marina yet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional unfinished business? Any new business? Alderman Hennar?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Chris King's eighth-grade basketball team, they were the Class 1A state champions, they, they were a good team, they blew through a lot of teams, so just want to congratulate them, and we'll get a proclamation for them and get them up here, so.
Outstanding. So will they be competing with Lanfair in four years for the city tournament title?
I don't know, we'll see, they're splitting up, a lot of them are splitting up, so.
That's a good thing for competition.
We get a new SHG person every year, so I got my eye on those boys.
Any other new?
Trying to get my son to make his bed, let alone play basketball.
Any other new business? Bonnie?
Yes, good evening, council members. I just wanted to let you know that tomorrow evening at 5:30, the Mayor's Youth Council is holding a youth town meeting. This is open to the youth of Springfield, for the high school and the middle school students, so we can hear what they have to say, then the Mayor's Youth Council meeting will make a presentation, is going to bring that back to you folks, to see what our youth have to say about Springfield, but it's from 5:30 to 6:30 tomorrow night at Springfield, or Southeast High School. So just as an FYI.
5:30 at Southeast High School, thank you. Any other new business?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd ask, LaShonda Fitch, she had a workshop today, and if you'd like to come forward and let us know how that went, we'd appreciate it.
LaShonda Fitch, Director at Oak Ridge Cemetery. So today, we had our second seminar, and we had three people show up, so it was a success. We were able to discuss the types of burials, which we have the cremation option, the traditional option, and we also have a new package where you can in-earn companions. So there's two, a niche that will allow for two individuals to be earned. We are looking forward to our upcoming March 25th at the African American History Museum, and we will look to extend our series in April and May at the Lincoln Library. We're trying to identify a good day and/or time, right now, we're looking at 12:30 to 1:30 a lunchtime, but we may move it to evenings to try to get more of the public engagement. I'm here to answer any questions. All right, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Director Fitch.
Thank you.
Any other new business? We have representatives, representatives from moving Pillsbury forward tonight.
Mary Frances, 101 West Kennedy, and I want to make this a little bit less formal tonight, so more conversational, if you have questions or comments while I'm talking, just feel free to jump in. So, we do have supporters from every one of the wards now, we have either a Neighborhood Association or a Homeowners Association who has their name listed on our website as a supporter. Alderman Proctor, you have the highest amount, you have seven, and second highest is Alderwoman Turner and Alderwoman Dissenso. So all of you have constituents now who do support what moving Pillsbury forward is doing.
Question. When you're, when you ask these people to support you, have you let them know that you want the city to take over the property?
Yes.
I, I live in Cobblestone.
Uh huh.
We have the Cobblestone President here, and I think she'd like to dispute that. Kim, you want to come up? Because I have a problem when you're going around asking for support and you're not telling them what you really want.
Okay, I'm, I have five minutes, so I'm going to take my five minutes, so.
You asked for questions, and.
Cobblestone is one of our supporters, it is on our website, that part of our mission is to ask the city to acquire the site, so. Anyone else right now?
Okay.
Okay, so the next thing is the diagram that I put together, and I just want to go through this to sort of educate everyone on the legal and the security landscape at the site right now. The US EPA lien, US EPA is still involved in this, they have filed a lien on the property, it's not for $2 million, it's for $3.2 million. And there is a three-year statute of limitations on that lien, which means it's coming to the point where they're going to have to think about what they want to do with that lien, and there is a possibility that they could forgive it. Okay, and that could happen relatively soon. I do have the attorney's name here, anyone can contact any of these attorneys on this diagram, I've, I've talked to most of them myself, and they're, they're very approachable. So the next arrow is the IEP, they have an injunction on the site, and injunction just means that you have to get permission from IEP to go on to the site, and, and if you do that, you have to wear protective clothing, a respirator, you have to sign a health waiver, and they, they have to know who's going in there, what time they're going in, what time they're leaving. And the functions of the IEP right now, monitor and allow site access, they have the power to lift the injunction on the site, which could be a real possibility coming up in the near future, and they can allow city code violations. I have, I understand that right now, there's a verbal agreement between the city and IEP that the city should not be issuing code violations, but they're reconsidering that, okay? And I, all of you got the court case, that, the administrative court case that I sent you, so that's actually been put on hold because of the state involvement in this, in the site. So the next arrow is the attorney, the Illinois Attorney General, and they are prosecutor for IEP, so they implement IEP requests, and so they enforce the injunction also. Now, if you go down to the bottom left, you see the owners, they have put up no trespassing signs all around the site, so we have another layer of safety there, where the police can arrest people if they see them trespassing. And the last arrow is the city, of course. The city does have occupancy prohibited on this site, you can see that in that, the court case, so people are not supposed to be living at, in those buildings. However, we discovered on January 29th, when some contractors went in there with IEP approval, that people are living in there. There was a tent encampment in one of the buildings, they saw two tents in there, with food supplies, with piles of metal recyclables, okay, so people are living in there. There are a lot of trespassers on that site, the police recently arrested, I think, three people on the site, and the city's function is to arrest trespassers and issue code violations if we can do that again, monitor safety breaches and collect taxes. So, all I want to say, I'm sorry, I'm going over, over my time. Probably soon, these top, this middle arrow and these top two arrows are going to be gone from this equation, and it's going to be the city and the owners. So, that's what, that's where our group comes in, to help the city make that transition to taking more responsibility, legal responsibility for this site. Okay, does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question. Do you believe that the city's really going to take that over?
I would love if the city acquired it.
Sponsor, somebody here on the council that's going to sponsor an ordinance?
Well, Chuck, in answer to your question, yes, I, I hope the city will, I do.
Well, I think that they need to bring the ordinance so we can, just not to give you false hope, because it's a, it's a, it's a financial nightmare for us to take that over, we couldn't afford to do it.
Well, I don't want you to take it over so you can pay to fix it, I want you to take it over because it puts us in a position to apply for federal and state money to take care of it.
I don't, I don't want to speak for, I don't want to speak for everybody on the council, I'm just telling you that for us to get financially involved in this thing would be a disaster.
We are already financially involved in it.
You are, we're not.
No, the city is.
We're, we're willing to, and we've already told you that we are willing to help with the security, about keeping people out, try to keep the fences up, and I think we've dedicated money to that, so, but if you got a.
I don't believe.
If you got a sponsor sitting on this city council, you should say, bring the ordinance so we don't give you any false hope.
I don't believe the city's dedicated any money to what you just mentioned.
Well, I, I think by our people going out, aren't we repairing the fence, Mayor?
Daryl Harris is here, he could speak to that, but we are, our police officers are going by there, you know, take, reviewing the area, we did the lighting with regards to replacement lighting, things of that nature, so. The one thing we will be doing is talking to the EPA this week, I believe, or next week, I think it is, Council?
I believe it's next Tuesday.
So is there anything on the litigation front?
Well, I think the, the problem that is, this is in no way an unusual problem, it's items like this do exist across the country, so the, what the city has been doing has been pushing both US EPA, IEP, and the Attorney General's Office to identify either state or federal funding to address it. Now, they have told us, just in the last few days, that they are going to revisit the issue of potential CIRCLA or super fund eligibility, and they have prepared a, a report that has been submitted to the US EPA, and the status of that, it's my understanding at least, will be understood better probably in the next few weeks, and so that is a significant step forward, and that is based on the city's pressing IEP and I, the Attorney General's Office to try to come up with some way to work with the US EPA, because it's not something that will be solved locally, and with respect to some of the items, the issue of the ordinance violations, they cannot address the environmental issues, that both state and federal regulations preempt local city control, and that's where that whole issue came up, when you get layers of various, both federal and state agencies involved, we're at the bottom. And so, from our perspective, they've taken the lead and have controlled the site and done the primary environmental work, we're simply contend, we're simply contending they're not done yet, and that's the discussion that, Mayor, you've been directly directing, and I think that we'll have some more information on that in the next few weeks, but the source of the funding is going to end up having to be either state or federal, because the sheer magnitude of the funding involved would be something that would be a tremendous hardship for the city to just assume by itself.
Alderman Hennar?
And, and am I wrong, Jim, that, that the liability itself on, on, on like any cancer claims or something that, you know, potential claims that, that would come out could be catastrophic for the city financially? Am I wrong there? I mean, if, if, if it came to, that, you know, I know right now, there's, it's privately owned, but if the city takes it over, then we would be responsible, if anybody has, has health problems from it or whatever, they could, at that time, they could come back at the city. Is that correct?
The difficulty, in, in a, in a nutshell, the difficulty that. The difficulty, in a nutshell, the difficulty that the city has in this whole entire situation is the unknown of what the real costs are. And the difficulty is, as Alderman Hanauer is just mentioning, we're not clear to be able to see all of the potential problems and costs. So to simply step in from a purely legal point of view and accept the, through a quit claim deed, accept the property, then you've accepted liability for the property. So before the city council could in any responsible way look at that, they'd have to know what that liability consists of. Right now, that is not known.
Okay, I do want to say that we, I do reach out to neighborhood and homeowners associations and ask them if they do want to support us. We offer to give presentations to their group to educate them about what we're doing. I send them our website link. I have discussions with them over the phone. And then I insist that we have a paper trail if they do decide they want to be a supporter, meaning I have to get something in writing saying that they want to be a supporter. I did get that from Cobblestone Estates. If they don't want to be a supporter, simply all they have to do is tell me, Mary, take my name off of the website, and I would be happy to do that.
You know, but here's the thing, they're not getting all the information. And I can tell you that I will be talking to Franklin Park Homeowners Association very close with them.
That's fine. We are very available.
Look, I understand what your compassion for this. I get that. We all would like to see this cleaned up, but you've got to understand, as a city, we have to protect our citizens, and this is not protecting our citizens. We are putting, we are putting the financial burden on the taxpayers of the city of Springfield if we try to.
Alderman Redpath, there are people living in that structure. It's extremely dangerous. There are teenagers and young people trespassing in there.
But we have a whole city to look out for, okay?
Do you think you're protecting the citizens right now?
We are protecting the citizens of Springfield. Yes, we are.
Ms. Francis, if I may, you know, I share some of the concerns being expressed tonight that if, I would highly recommend that Moving Pillsbury Forward be very cautious about saying too early that you wish the city of Springfield to acquire the sites. What you're doing is very important. You're creating, you know, the proper initiative for the state government and the federal government. And you had a really, I thought, solid proposal where the city acquired that strip of what used to be a parking lot that contains no buildings and no hazardous materials and create a green space there between the buildings and the neighborhood. And that would be an acquisition by the city, but it would be a legally safe acquisition by the city. And I would emphasize small steps like that, instead of coming here and suggesting a big giant step before we're ready to make that giant step. Because I think you'll build up some pushback that you don't want at this point. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr., Mayor, do you still wish to comment?
Well, we appreciate your public engagement. You know, that really is helpful, really when we're trying to get state funding or federal funding, when we go to DC each year with the chamber. That's one of the initiatives we push, the importance of that. But I think everybody said, you know, the other side, the difficulties in it, but we'll continue to pursue it from the legal aspect and, you know, take those steps that we can to, I think there's Phase One, Phase Two environmental studies. It comes down to financial resources. That's the conversation we continue to have with the EPA, who's going to pay for it. But really, it's going to, in order for it to be a success, it's going to have to take federal, state, local dollars. So we do appreciate your community engagement because it's important, just like Alderman McMinimum does on pensions, you're doing on Pillsbury, others do it for the homeless. We understand it, we appreciate it, because it keeps it on the forefront. These are the challenges we have, and we'll meet as a community altogether.
Thank you.
Alderman, Alderwoman Turner.
I knew about the one visit, and then we weren't able, we weren't able to get in. I was not aware that there was a second visit, and there had been admittance to the site until I received a phone call this afternoon, and I was told that, and I was told that there were people living in there. That's the first I heard about it, was this afternoon. So when you guys went in and saw there were people, did you talk with police department? Did you report that?
Yes, I've told, we've told everyone, the police chief, the fire chief, the NPO, the IEP. I talked to James Morgan, the attorney.
Okay, so I would like, I would like to hear from either police or fire, what steps were taken after they learned that people were living in there. Because this, quite honestly, this is the first I've heard of it, was this afternoon. And I actually engaged into a light argument with the person that called me. I'm like, no, that can't be true. My apologies.
I don't know if the representative from Cobblestone still wishes to talk, but Mr. Richmond, do you wish to add anything before we turn it over to Cobblestone?
No, I would, can I have them answer my question?
I'm sorry. I didn't know, I was looking over there. Go ahead, Chief, way is law.
Good evening. I was contacted by a reporter asking about this a few days afterwards.
Also, they didn't contact you directly?
No one called the police the day that people were allegedly in there. I called, I called the source, we talked to the reporter and spoke to him. I said, did anybody see anybody? Did anybody call us? Nobody called us, nobody saw us. The first I heard about it was from reporters. I called him to get more clarification, because we had no police reports on it, we had no calls for services on it, et cetera. So that's basically our knowledge of it.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that we have to be very careful, because when things like that happen, we immediately need to contact the police and fire so that they can do a follow-up and not have to rely. Because this, just let me say, sometimes when people are very passionate about anything, I'm not talking about Pillsbury, when people are passionate about anything, it's like they want to get as much attention to it as possible very quickly. And most people think that in order to get that attention very quickly, it's, I need to call the news and have them go out, and then that, you know, gets everything going. But in this situation, where we're talking about people's lives being in danger, the first call should be to the police department or the fire department, so they can immediately dispatch someone there to find out, you know exactly what's going on, and we have legitimate follow-ups. So I just, I just think that that needs to happen. I also think that when, because I have been, you know, I was going to the Moving Pillsbury Forward meetings early, very early on. I was going every week. And I do understand that, you know, that this is something that needs attention. However, I think that in these types of situations, especially when you're talking about public safety issues, there really has to be a better coordination with the city and law enforcement and the fire department. Because at the end of the day, ultimately, these are the individuals that are going to have, that are going to have to be charged with dealing with these situations. So I think that there really needs to be better coordination with our police and fire, especially when people are going onto the site. I would, just me, but from a, from a city standpoint, and I'm not the man in the big chair, I'm not taking your, I'm just saying, as an alderperson, if there's ever opportunities when Moving Pillsbury Forward is coordinating entry into the site, I think that there definitely should be a representative from local law enforcement and the fire department accompanying them into the site, because I just think that needs to happen.
Your point is taken. What I would say about that is, I asked specifically, if people were seen in there? No, was the answer I got. A tent, some belongings, some food supplies were seen in there, evidence that people may have been in there. We have arrested people for trespassing. I think we've made two arrests so far, maybe three. I don't have the exact number in front of me. But with that said, also, the police department is not equipped with the appropriate equipment to go in there and search that, nor would I send my officers in in the middle of the night or under dark to go search for somebody who voluntarily went into, in that building. Okay? So with that said, obviously, if people were out in the parking lot, we get a call, there's people in there, we do it. If there was some kind of site visit going on, we would have people stand by. If there were people inside, then obviously we would do the appropriate thing. But we're going to have to have fire there, they have to be deconed, fire would have to go in first, you know, with the appropriate equipment, to make sure we can do this as safe as possible. This is no easy thing. But people, if they are going there, staying there, are doing it on their own volition, and I'm not going to put my officers at risk to go in there at nighttime or do just a search for these people without the appropriate equipment. We will go in with the appropriate equipment and the appropriate equipment only unless it's an emergency situation.
And I agree with that. My comment about police and fire going in was in conjunction with any type of, any type of inspection that Moving Pillsbury Forward was doing with anyone else. I just think that it puts everybody at risk.
If the AG's office wants to go through there and do an inspection, and they want our people to stand by, we'll be more than happy to cooperate with them and try to make that happen.
Yeah, and I would, I think that that is legitimately how it should happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I didn't realize we had immediate information as to your questions, Alderman Turner. Fire Chief Rainey, do you want to add anything?
I can't really add much to it. I mean, obviously, we don't want people in the building, but we have the same concerns. We are not people that normally go in and evacuate people out of buildings that don't want to be evacuated. So he has the concerns of not having the proper equipment. We're not law enforcement. We don't, you know, we don't go in when people want to be in there. I don't want any of our guys, any of our members harmed trying to evacuate people that walked in under their own accord. So it's a lot, I mean, the bottom line is, it's, I just don't want, I don't want them in there. Whatever we have to do to make that happen is the answer to the immediate problem, is to keep them from being able to access that building.
Alderman Gregory.
Mr. Richmond, when you met with, I know you've been meeting with a lot of these folks, when you met with them, what did they say about fencing the entire facility? They fixed some holes in the fence, but they need to, in my opinion, fence the whole thing. I mean, the fence on the out, on the, you know?
Right. I know we had discussions with that this past fall about the potential of fencing the entire property. You know, we had some estimates on some monies to maybe put in the new city budget to potentially do that. I think the determination was made amongst elements of our working group, but also in discussions with the Attorney General's Office and the Illinois EPA, is that the existing perimeter fence can be beefed up and made adequate around the existing structures and the existing hazard that's there. Meaning the portions of the property that are outside of the fence and wall portion right now are not environmentally hazardous, and there are no structures on those areas of the property.
Well, they can go around the back, you know? When I was, you know, a kid, we'd just go around the back and go in there. I mean, you know, it's easy. I mean, we can't keep people out of there from a city step, but we can put a million trans, no trespassing signs, but as long as the back of that is open, and I'm not saying that the city should pay for it, I think we should have first took the attempt to make the owners pay for it before we.
Right. Again, there's opportunity to coordinate with the Attorney General's Office, who has yet another court date on March 27th in Judge Maldonia's court, as they've had every two months for the last five years related to this site. This is how long this goes back. So the safety and security, this is nothing new. If we, as a community, want to see beefed up security around the site, that's the method to go at it, through the Attorney General's Office, in coordination with the Attorney General's Office, the Illinois EPA, and through Judge Maldonia's court.
Because I actually, with regard to the fence, I actually had an independent contractor to go out and give me an estimate on, you know, give me an estimate on what it would cost to fence it, because I was going to then, you know, look at putting something in the budget. But then legal issues arose about, because we don't own the property, then it becomes, you can't put a fence around somebody else's property. And then if something happens, there's liability attached to it. So, you know, then, then, you know, I had to step back from that, because from a legal standpoint, we couldn't do it.
I completely agree. Once, once the city of Springfield takes some responsibility there on securing the property, that's the point at which you open your, the door for liability, and that's something to weigh, be weighed. Again, that's why the most appropriate method is, we've determined in the last three, four months, is to go through the Attorney General's Office and Judge Maldonia's court to force the owners of record to beef up the fencing to our satisfaction as a community.
Alderman Redpath.
Mr. Richmond, so the owners of the property are broke, right? I mean, they don't have any money, right?
They're insolvent, yes.
Okay, so is, what is Judge Maldonia doing? Is he, is he trying to get money out of them, or, I don't understand the process.
You know, I've gone to Judge Maldonia's court every other month, a number of times over the last five years. You know, it's a long-term management of the safety and security issues at the site. It's really that simple. That's all we're doing in Judge Maldonia's court.
Okay, so basically, EPA and Attorney General's the one that's trying to move this thing forward, is that correct?
No, it's ongoing safety and security management issue. That's really the only reason it's in Judge Maldonia's court at this point. It's an environmental hazard, and we know it's a safety hazard. So it's a matter of, we've been doing this for, going on five years now, taking taxpayer dollars, so there is a carrying cost to this. My estimate is $30,000 plus a year for the city of Springfield and the county with the courts, the public works, fly dumping pickup, policing, fire, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're well over $150,000 into this property right now, without having collected taxes since 2013. That's why we're looking at long-term solutions.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Mr. Mayor, if Corporation Council, you can give an update of what we're trying to do at the next court date with, in conjunction with the.
What, what Mr. Richards was just talking about, what Alderman Turner was talking about, just for a moment, the state is monitoring through injunctionary process to force the owner to take certain steps. So what is happening is, the court is holding the owner accountable, for example, potentially in contempt, potentially back into either fines or back into jail, potentially, for a contempt proceeding, to do certain things, like for example, fix the fence whenever it's brought to the attention, and so on, and so on. So that process has proceeded along in that fashion. We have asked them to include as a security measure fixing all of the security lights that are on the property. The city has fixed or converted to LED those lights that are around the perimeter that are on the city property. But there are internal security lights that are out, that we've asked them to include that as a security measure, which they have the authority to do. But they have to ask the court to do that, and then the court has to order the property owner to do it. Second, we also have asked them to require the property owner, as a matter of security, to do some kind of a sweep or inspection of the building by a properly qualified company that has the proper gear and so on, to literally go and inspect to see who's present there. Now, the ability of that property owner to do it, they may or may not have the money, but we've asked them to include that as a security measure. So that's kind of the current process that, to try to have a little more reach. Now, to the extent that the owner can do it, or can accomplish it, then that's, that's one thing. If they don't do it, then they'll have to address that in the court proceeding.
Does the gentleman from Cobblestone still wish to make any comments? Or the gentlewoman?
The lady.
Do you have any comments to make?
I do. Okay. Kim Elliott, I am the president of the Cobblestone Homeowners Association. I'm also a Realtor. And Mary Francis and I had an absolutely wonderful conversation on the telephone. I support their efforts so much. I know that area needs to be cleaned up. What we didn't talk about was them asking the city to do it, because I know the people in the city, I know the budget of the city, and I know that project is huge. So we even talked about different ideas, different ways of them fundraising, or going to different places. I even suggested come to Capital Area Association of Realtors and talk to our governmental affairs director. We get grants all the time. So what happened was, I actually went to our GAD, and I talked to him, and I said, you know, this is really a great idea to get this area cleaned up. It needs to be. Unfortunately, his hands were tied because it's not, it's privately owned. And he was going to check into it, but he doesn't think that he has the ability to do it. But we did. We had a great conversation about cleaning up that area, and absolutely, it needs to be. about cleaning up that area, and absolutely, it needs to be done. It's, it's bigger than Springfield, though. It, I think it needs to have federal money. I just don't know how it happens. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments regarding Pillsbury? If not, then, we do have a request for exec.
You'll do someone's, someone's standard.
Sir, I think you're here to speak about the warming shelter. Is, is there a?
I signed up to speak for five minutes.
Is there a Mr. Schnell here?
Yes, sir.
That signed up?
Yes, sir.
You wish to come forward and?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Richmond still has issue with Pillsbury. He, he signed up to speak.
I didn't get, sign up, but you're free to talk, Chris, if you want to have more to say.
Sure.
Yeah. So, I, I did sign up online earlier today, but I don't know if that.
I didn't get it, but, no matter.
That's all right. I've, I've actually, I've got a, a written piece that I distributed to everybody around the horseshoe that, that I'm planning to read. So, hopefully, it takes a little bit less than five minutes. I'm glad, obviously, to take any questions. This is a bit of an update on, on the four months' worth of, of hard work that, that Moving Pillsbury Forward Working Group has done. And, and obviously, we talked a little bit about this, so I'll get started. The eighteen-acre mill plant at 1525 East Phillips Street closed and fell silent nineteen years ago. The downward spiral began for the entire northeast area of Springfield as the job, loss of jobs and economic activity in the area diminished. A reasonable and workable plan for the old plant never materialized, and the problems associated with the property became worse as time passed. The problems surrounding the plant began shortly after the 2001 closure. The plant was marketed for several years with no buyer found. It was sold for scrap in 2008. Urban mining of the plant's vast amount of recyclable metal slowly took place for years. In late 2014, the owners cut corners with required asbestos removal to increase their margins. Criminal act, the criminal activity resulted in a federal prison sentence for one of the people responsible. Another more tragic result was that our community was left with a huge contaminated mess. A big portion of the contaminated mess was addressed in 2017, when the US EPA led an emergency cleanup at the site. Federal rules only allow for up to $2 million toward the cleanup. For that amount, the bulk of all asbestos was removed from the plant, along with a host of other chemical contaminants, mercury, petroleum products, pesticides, et cetera. Since that time, the site has remained a serious problem. The insolvent owners have essentially walked away. No taxes have been paid since 2013. The community remains in need of a solution for the property. Solving the Pillsbury problem is difficult, but certainly worthwhile. Over 12,000 people live within one mile of the property. When the property is cleared, Springfield will experience community benefit in five areas: health, justice, safety, environment, and economy. These will be tough to measure, but we know that these five areas improving will have a net result of a better quality of life for the entire city. Our elected officials will have to weigh this as part of the overall solution. Clearing the eighteen acres will take approximately $12 million. For this price, the property can be acquired, cleaned up, fully demolished, and prepped for redevelopment. Before the project begins, it is best that a plan is established for redevelopment. That will allow for better understanding of the return on investment for the project. If redevelopment only yields 60% financial returns over a given period of time, then the remainder must be considered as community benefit. Again, our elected officials will have to weigh that as part of the overall solution. The active community volunteers associated with Moving Pillsbury Forward believe that the level of community benefit exceeds the dollar costs. The overall $12 million project should be a coordinated government effort. The city of Springfield should be in the lead, with an anticipated help from various programs at the county, state, and federal levels. Coordination of the project should be undertaken by a well-qualified environmental contractor. The project is both reasonable and workable. Reasonable means that the dollar cost is worth the benefit to the community. A similar policy judgment was made just this past year, when our city leaders voted to spend $7 million supporting community health through the YMCA project. We believe the $12 million price of this project is equally as reasonable. Workable refers to the ability of the project to be managed and completed in a defined timeframe. Again, after four months, our assessment is that the legal acquisition aspects, the US EPA lien, project coordination, cleanup, demolition, site preparation, can all be effectively managed and completed within five years. This also allows for ample time to adequately manage financing at the local, state, and federal levels. Volunteers associated with the Moving Pillsbury Forward Working Group have contacted all state and federal elected officials representing the area, and have been well advised that with local government leadership on this project, they are all prepared to help facilitate full access to established state and federal programs and resources. In summary, the community needs this project completed. $12 million project is reasonable and workable. The community benefit, health, justice, safety, environment, and economy, is worth the investment. Redevelopment will yield significant, yet not complete, project cost offsets. The recommendation of the volunteer community working group, Moving Pillsbury Forward, is that the city begin necessary steps to acquire the property and proceed toward cleanup, demolition, and redevelopment. Again, I'll read that last line just one more time. "Our recommendation is that the city begin necessary steps to acquire the property and proceed toward cleanup, demolition, and redevelopment." So, that's where we are as a working group, after four months of rolling up our sleeves, working primarily on the public safety issues at the front end of this, where we did get the site owners, the legal responsibility through the courts, to secure the site, put up the no trespassing signs, et cetera, et cetera. We had to focus on that first. But we're also focusing on the bigger picture of redevelopment. The community needs this eighteen acres to be dealt with in a way where it's taken down and redeveloped, such that we can get it back on the tax rolls for the community, and back into productive use for our community once again. Right now, it's a net negative for that whole area of town, and I would argue for all of Springfield. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to oblige.
I don't believe there's any questions at this point in time, but thank you, Chris.
All right, appreciate it.
So, there was an individual by the name of Mr. Schrell that signed up. You're welcome to come forward.
Oh, okay. Sir?
Yes.
Sit down. If not, it's okay. If not, it's all right. First of all, I need to state that my appearance before you, mayor, and the city council members are my views or statements that I may express are not related to any community service committee that I may have membership with. Our First Amendment writes, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, abridging the freedom of speech of the press, or the right of the people to peacefully assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances." This right is what is afforded to us tonight. However, it was upsetting to me to watch the public comments presented to the mayor and the council last week, to single out an elected official, electric office, elected office holder, either past or present, using the First Amendment covers that. However, it needs to be used with care and sensitivity, such as an official's mother who recently passed. And, mayor, you have my continued condolences about your mother. I'm going to read to you real briefly, and as fast as I can, in three minutes and 50 seconds. I'm going to read you a history, a brief history of one of our most distinguished citizens. Sunday, August 26, 1940, he arrived in New York at the Pennsylvania Station, God's country. During World War I, his grandfather traveled extensively as a salesman. He was arrested by the Russians and was sent to a Siberian prison, suspected of spying. He escaped in 1918. At the time, children were never allowed to listen to the rented radio or read the newspaper. For good conduct during the week, he and his sister were each given one cent to spend at the grocery store to purchase a banana. He was told that whatever, that whatever his dad did and went, he was never to let go of his hand, no matter what. Fear truly set in, although at age 11, little did he understand the great danger. At age 12, he arrived at the Aix Hotel, only to be told that their parents were going to England, leaving him and his sister in foster care. He wanted to return to his friends and family in Vienna. It was 1939, while staying with foster home, the Johnsons, who lived on a tiny farm and raised rabbits, they would have rabbits every day for dinner, and on some Fridays, he would get to eat catfish and chips. August 1940, a ship earmarked from Liverpool to Quebec. When land was sited, he and everyone else on the ship cheered. His Uncle Paul was successful in finding his father a job in Chicago. After the move to Chicago, his father wanted to pick a city, generally located, central, little kid, I'm sorry. His mother closed her eyes and pointed on a map, and Springfield was the new destination for the family. His father worked, excuse me, his father walked five miles each way to work each day. His mother loved cats and kept one of the most, kept one for most of her life. When she arrived in Springfield, she found a black cat for which she purchased a leash. This person, he also enjoyed the Boy Scout Troop Number One, and he was pictured in the Boys Life Magazine of 1942. Never active in sports, he was throwing out, thrown out of physical education. At age 17, he attempted to enlist in the armed services, but was under the age of 18. He continued his education in Springfield Junior College. While attending, he received his draft notice. During a cold day in January 1945, he boarded a train for Chicago. When he awoke one morning at Fort, Fort Sill, he saw a rattlesnake running out of the end of the tent. He tore, he running, while he was running out the end of the tent, he tore out the stakes and the harnesses holding up the tent, not to realize the snake was dead. After he completed basic training, he knew he was in love. Christmas 1951, he, he informed his parents that he was going to marry his sweetheart, and they were married June 14, 1952. They enjoyed a wonderful wedding breakfast at the Chesapeake Seafood House. Coming back to Springfield was a new beginning. Within a week, he had a job at Arch Wilson Clothing Store. He also worked as a Boy Scout leader, State of Illinois IDOT, and 22 years with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. He served on the Board of Directors of the Salvation Army. And during his tenure, he started the Helping Hands Center. The person that I've described to you was Mayor Ozzy Langfelder. The book, My Incredible Journey. A boy at age 12 was informed that his parents were going to England, and the family was separated. Trusted to the care of others, there is not one person in this room, not one, that could not become homeless. Together, we should work together to give a hand up to those who are displaced. The homeless may not be able to find or able to return to their friends and family as they wish. However, new friends and a new journey in life, as Ozzy did. For, it was not for his mother pointing to a map, for, not for his mother pointing to a map, a series of events would have never taken place from today. We wouldn't, we have never, we would have never had to follow with him. Not pushing anyone who finds themselves homeless away, pushing them away, but perhaps giving them a new map in life, as his mother did. I will now ask the mayor if, if he would read the proclamation for his father dated June 16, 1988. Ozzy mentions in the proclamation to urge all citizens to work together. Mayor, if there's any way I can assist the administration and Helping Hands, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you. And I'd like to share real briefly with the council members, if anybody would like to read The Incredible Journey, see me after the meeting. You can borrow it, get it back to me, and I'll give it to the next council meeting. Stella's helping me here. She's going to give this to the mayor, and if he wouldn't mind accepting it and reading it. Then, there is a copy of that proclamation, and the first-day postage stamped from the post office, when that was done in 1988. And it's framed, and it's now being donated to the city of Springfield. And Stella's opening it right now for presentation.
What is that?
It's a copy of that proclamation, an envelope postmarked by the post office on that date, first day of circulation, Lincoln's envelope. It, it's a proclamation from your father about working together. And the, what it was, was the new opening of the Lincoln Dome. They remodeled it and reopened it. But, you know, in his book, he talks about working together. And after I saw the other council meeting, not only don't want to volunteer whatever I can help with, but without that history that I just read you, a lot of things would be different here tonight. a lot of things would be different here tonight. And with that, I thank you. Any questions for anybody?
All the women.
Just thank you very much for coming and speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
So I appreciate Mr. Snell coming up and sharing his insights. I'm glad you read the book. I'm sure all the elderly might have already. But if not, we do have copies in my office, if you'd like to have a copy. But that's what it's all about, is working together. And you named a couple of organizations. One is Helping Hands, which he did found. The other one, or helped found, because it was in conjunction with Contact Ministries. So a lot of individuals helped with that effort, and they should be thanked as well. Salvation Army, you know, which, you know, it goes deep with our family. I mean, Salvation Army, you know, when we talk about welcoming cities or the way our world is today, back then, you had to have a sponsor. So in order to come to this country, you had to have a sponsor. And the reason for that is so you weren't a drag on the government. And it was for support. And so you're, when you're brought into this country, you had the support services necessary to be successful. And that support service was provided by Salvation Army. And so, you know, people said, wow, I can't believe you stay so calm when they're using my parents' name, who have passed away, using Salvation Army and, you know, practically throwing them under the bus when they're trying to put their best effort forward to take care of the homeless. You know, that's hard. It's not easy, you know, because we're all trying to do what's in the best interest. I truly believe that. And so we have a different path to go, you know, you can go different paths to reach that ultimate service that we're trying to provide our city. So that's what he understood. And, you know, Salvation Army, if it wasn't for them, we probably, I wouldn't probably be here. So it's good for their support, sponsorship of the Langfelder family that got us to this point. But I appreciate this, and it reads, whereas the Lincoln Home in Springfield, Illinois, is only home Lincoln, is the only home Lincoln owned. And whereas Lincoln and his family lived in his home, or this house, for 17 years, and whereas there is no other historic building in the country that can tell more about Lincoln as a husband, father, neighbor, politician, and president-elect. And whereas the National Park Service, which has administered the home site since 1972, has directed the restoration work. And whereas this project is the, one of the most detailed and historic restoration ever attempted. And whereas this is the 101st anniversary of Robert Lincoln's donation of the home to the state of Illinois, now therefore I, Ozzy Langfelder, Mayor of the city of Springfield, Illinois, do hereby proclaim June 16, 1988, as Lincoln Home reopening day in the city of Springfield, and call upon all citizens to participate and work together past this historical event. So thank you.
Were you in any way advised that you would be receiving this?
No, I just, I think he signed up to speak, but no.
Well, thank you, Mr. Snell.
I actually don't know Mr. Snell, but I appreciate him coming and making the donation to the library.
It's good to review history and be inspired by history. Now, back to the mundane, we have a request for executive session to discuss.
There's someone standing there.
Sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Erin Kirkpatrick at 2160 West Monroe. One of the things I'm involved with is the Health and Environment Committee with Moving Pillsbury Forward. So it's hard to jump back to that. I wasn't planning to speak, but I believe it was Mr. McMinahan, McMiniman, who brought up the three nearly empty lots that are just west of the site, specifically just west of 15th, from Division to Enterprise to East Phillips to Methany, that by my very unofficial estimate, total approximately 3.2 acres. This is what I'm interested in helping to develop into a green space. And as a short-term move to move Pillsbury forward, I was wondering what concerns, if any, you might have regarding those lots?
One of the things we would have to do is we'd need to have somebody go in and do a soil test on those, because, you know, here's our big concern about this. We got stuck with, what was it, about a million-dollar payment on a property that we purchased that ended up having, what, coal tar on it that we didn't know about? And we got stuck with a million-dollar bill on that. And probably, I thought, did we get fined too or something? But, so we kind of learned our lesson on that. But before we do anything, I'd want to have soil testing to make sure we're not, we're not involved in, we get, get kind of blindsided, I guess I would say. So that would be my concern.
Mr. Mayor?
If you could give the addresses to Darrell Harris, he can, he'd be the point of contact. He's with Public Works. He's helped go to the meetings with Pillsbury and representing the city in that regard. So if you'd give that to him, and he can follow up.
Sure. Was there any other concerns with the site, with those lots?
I can just say, I'm not familiar with the site well enough to express a concern. But thank you for, for being part of looking for solutions here.
Thank you. And Ms. Julie Becker, thanks for being here tonight. I just received your request to speak, so you did sign up. And is there anyone else who wished us to speak during the public session?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I've been in here, I was speaking in front of the council before, about the homeless community. I'm not here tonight to throw anybody under the bus, point fingers, or anything like that. I think one of the things.
Ma'am, could you give your name, sorry?
It's Julie Becker. And I'm with.
You are the Julie Becker. Sorry.
I am. Helping the Homeless in Springfield, Illinois. One of the things I think that's been missing in some of the conversation is the very real stories about what is going on in the community. I'm the boots-on-the-ground person. I go out and I answer texts and phone calls and private messages from people. And I thought it would be appropriate for me to come here tonight. Last Thursday, I was contacted by a cab driver who had a gentleman in her car that is visually impaired. He was kicked out of his place of residence and had nowhere to go for a while. He wasn't able to go into a shelter situation because he didn't have anybody to help him navigate around any of the shelters. So I put him up in a hotel room for a while, until we can figure out what to do with him. The next day, I was contacted by a woman who is a paraplegic. And she has to do some procedures every four hours on the dot. She has a caregiver. She was displaced from her home and didn't have any place to go for almost a week. Again, my ministry got a hotel room for her. That was Saturday. Sunday, I was contacted by a woman that I'm still trying to work with and get her some help. She doesn't even understand what a social worker is. She is living in a shed. She has fibromyalgia. She has dislocated discs. She has a number of health issues. I, like I said, I'm still trying to talk to her and, and figure out who can best help her. Monday, I was contacted by a mother who apparently was taken out of the home of her husband's friend, dropped off somewhere, and it's a local town, not Springfield, with her four children. I asked her if she called the police. She did. But since it wasn't her home, she had no jurisdiction. I asked her who the owner of the van was, that the husband dropped her off and the kids, and they're co-owners. So he apparently doesn't have to give her the van in order to get her and her four kids around. Again, hotel room. Today, I was contacted, again, by a man and his fiancee, who was pregnant, kicked out of a home, won't have any place to go until Saturday. Last week, I had another couple that I met by accident because we've been standing on the street corner periodically in favor of the center. Her and her husband have been walking the streets every night because one of them couldn't get in the shelter. And as couples do, they won't split up. I get these phone calls all the time, every day, at least one every day. These are people that could benefit from the short-term shelter in a place like the Center for Health and Housing. I have a lot of support in the community from people that I call angels, who donate money and food to help these people. But I got to tell you, it's heartbreaking to see what happens to people that could happen to any one of us. These are not people who have been on the street for 12 years, or five years, or a year. These are people that are losing space because of one reason or another. I ask enough questions, first of all, to try to get people to go to shelters. And there are all kinds of reasons why people won't go. PTSD, one lady has night terrors. So she would disrupt a shelter environment. I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, we need to get back on board again and try to get this center going. Nobody more than me knows how important this is because tomorrow, I'm going to get another phone call from someone who needs help in the interim. I have funds right now, but, you know, they could run out any time. And I can't tell people, no. I, the guy that contacted me today, I couldn't tell him and his wife, who's pregnant, that I can't get them a hotel room. I would urge you to please seriously get back on this issue, find a building, get it going. It's not going to be a perfect situation. Nothing that I do is perfect, but I'm doing the best I can. And, you know, I would be supportive in any way to help with that. But I've got my hands full doing this. It breaks my heart, and sometimes I wake up at 2:00 in the morning and I can't go back to sleep because I'm thinking about all of the people who have reached out to me and the ones that are going to continue reaching out to me in these kinds of situations. I can't say anything else except please do something about this.
Thank you for comments, Ms. Becker. And you're an extraordinarily generous and committed person, and you set a high example for all of us. And I'm sure that the 50 churches in Springfield, together with city, township, and county government altogether. You know, we didn't come up with the perfect site last time when we put the full effort to it, but the hospitals and a very large group of organizations and persons are still focused on this. And there'll be another proposal, I'm sure, with time. And it's too bad that we have this gap right now. It's a horrible situation.
It's more of a concern during this kind of weather. Meeting up with people who are drenched, their socks are soaked, their shoes are ruined, they have, you know, very light coats that they're walking around in. The children and the pregnant women really get to me. So I would just urge you to please keep moving forward, keep, keep the talk going. You know, the time has passed where we need to throw anybody under the bus about this. Let's just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and giving a voice to people who can't always come and speak for themselves. Appreciate that.
Any further requests to address the council? If not, we do have an executive session tonight to consider probable and imminent litigation involving a personnel matter. Is there a motion to, is there a motion, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Be safe.